Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's regular meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council for June 14th, 2018. We all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Van, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Daniels?
Still here.
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Slowey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bruins?
Present.
And Mayor Miller?
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, June 18th at 9:00 a.m., and again on Wednesday, June 20th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Onto the next item.
Next item is presentation number four, an update on the Red, White, and Blue Parade to be held on June 23rd, 2018.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michelle Sario. I'm with the General Services Department. And just updating you on our parade that we have coming up, it's just a little over a week. It's going to be on Saturday, June 23rd, beginning at 9:00 a.m. It is our 19th annual parade. Parade route runs from Sunrise Boulevard from Uplands Way to Sunrise Mall. This year, the parade will once again consist of floats, classic cars, the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, San Juan School, High School alumni members, and various community organizations. The ever-popular, popular Rodri Club of Citrus Heights Pancake Breakfast is once again happening this year. Tickets for adults are $5, and then children under 12 are $3. We always have, have great events, and we want to thank our sponsors for making this all possible. So we want to thank Sunrise Mall, Sunrise Marketplace, Air 91, Air One, 99.1 FM, 99.5 K-Love. So please just come out for the Red, White, and Blue Parade on Saturday, June 23rd, beginning at 9:00. Thanks so much.
Very good. Looks like the weather's going to be good.
It is, yeah.
Not too hot.
Ninety-two, so far.
No rain?
No rain. Never, it hasn't happened yet, Steve.
Well, do a little dance, then. Thank you, Michelle. All right, next item, please, Amy.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Mr. Fox, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fairly short, and been going on since our last council meeting, we had the Citrus Heights Water District Corporate Yard re-grandopening and ribbon-cutting, which went very well. Beautiful setup that they've done over at the Corporation Yard, having it all now paved, concrete in. They have actual designated work areas for the different products and things that they have to do, and it was, it was a good turnout. Very, very pleased and proud to see what the, the Water District has done in that previously dirt area. The Greater Sacramento Board of Directors held a, a meeting and a reception this month that I attended for, for a little while, one evening. Good turnout from local elected and business officials. Good time to, to kind of meet and talk to some of the folks that are actively looking to work in our area. I followed a few of the city staff over to Oakmont Senior Living Center. It's a, it's actually in Orangevale, but they're a member of the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce, and they've been, gotten very active with our community folks. I wanted to see exactly what they were offering. It was tremendous operation. It's a very upscale residential living facility. It's meeting a need. I think that it may be limited in scope to, to some socioeconomic level, but an excellent opportunity for folks to get into a, a living situation where they still have the freedom to come and go as they want. They have their own apartments. Some of them have tremendous, very nice-sized two- and three-bedroom units. Not a whole lot of them, but a few, but quite an upscale operation. Leadership Citrus Heights graduation reception, and reception was held over at Stones. A good group of folks came through the, the leadership class, was able to meet with them and attend their graduation. Congressman Armie Barra and Portia Middleton and her family helped put together a Purple Heart Vietnam Veteran Presentation to a Vietnam veteran who never received his Purple Heart. He'd come home, he lives here in our community, and they found out about it and took it under their direction and got some things done. Congressman Barra's office was very gracious in making sure that this thing worked out and so that it was put together, and I attended that, and it was very nicely done. The Chamber Luncheon and the State of the City Speech by our mayor, I'll let somebody else or the mayor talk about that. Today I had the STA Board Meeting. We did our budget approval, and we finally got to the discussion on the split of the SB1 and Measure A funding that's still left and how we're doing it. There's been a lot of talk on the percentage of spending or splitting of the funds between transit and roads. We voted today to continue with a, the concept that we're going to do a 30% transit, 70% road split on the fundings as they are divvied out by Caltrans and given to the county and then coming to us individually. For Citrus Heights, that's about $122,625 in, in early projections of the figures, at least, that we saw today. And that's it.
Thank you, Al. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank the, literally, hundreds of people who took the time to email me, comment, call, react to the situation of the council's actions last week and censoring me. It really means a lot to me that you would do that. Do you want to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Warren for his letter to the editor, which I thought was very spot-on about the situation? And, and then finally, for those that expressed some concern about me, I want you to know that everything's fine. My wife and my god know the truth, and that's what's most important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slowey?
Thank you. So, last week, the League of California Cities met specifically the Tax and Revenue Subcommittee that I vice chair on, and pretty much spent the whole day talking about some of the proposals within the state tax laws that will ultimately have some effect on Citrus Heights. There's a case right now in the Federal Supreme Court that's due to be adjudicated by the end of the month, and it's basically Wayfair online services, let me rephrase that, South Dakota against the Wayfair online services. And in essence, if the justices vote, somewhat similar to the questions that came out when they were hearing the matter, it may overturn the Quill decision. And what the Quill decision is, is it says, if you're a retailer and you have no physical presence, so let's say ABC Internet Company, and maybe they sell cigarettes, I'm just using that as an example, if they don't have a physical location within the state of California, they're not required to collect sales tax on all the sales that they generate throughout, specifically California or any other state that they don't have a presence in. It's estimated that 60% of the stuff that folks buy online today, no sales tax is passed on. So if the Quill decision gets overturned, one, you and I, and, you know, probably rightfully so, will be paying taxes, sales tax on many more items across the board. But in addition to that, there's a, the Legislative Analyst Office came up with a report that says the distribution today of sales tax is probably not fair across the board. So basically, if you think about it today, if you walk into your local Walgreens and buy something, and it's a taxable item, and that location of the Walgreens is in Citrus Heights, anything you buy, that sales tax, there's a portion of that sales tax that goes to Citrus Heights because that's where the building was located. If you buy something from Amazon, as an example, today, you pay a sales tax on it, but where's the Amazon building located that the goods were shipped from? If it came out of the one in Sacramento, then the tax goes to Sacramento City. If your particular item came out of Texas, Plano, Texas, the sales tax goes to Plano, Texas, the portion that would be local allocated. So there's a lot of thought, you know, put it mildly, there's some disagreement out there among cities and counties. If you have a distribution center, obviously, and you're getting the taxes today, you want to keep it. Under the new proposal by the Senator Hertzberg, that would change, and it would go to destination. What destination means is that they can track it to your address, so if you live in Citrus Heights, and even though it was shipped from Texas, the sales tax would go to, a portion of the sales tax would go to Citrus Heights. So there's, you know, the only ones, quite frankly, who are, you know, really pushing back on this is the one who's, has the big distribution centers and get the income, the sales tax from everybody across, not just California, but other states. But the long and the short of it is, one, there's a bill that's been proposed by a state senator that looks to do that. Two, the Legislative Analyst Office have said it's unfair. So there's going to be a change, it's just a question of what that change looks like. So the League is trying to work out amongst the various entities a compromise bill. And if you really think about it, again, using the Amazon example, there is some inherent cost to Sacramento to have a distribution center. There's wear and tear on their roads, infrastructure, all the trucks, you know, driving around, as opposed to, you know, Citrus Heights getting that income because a truck, you know, flew down the street, dropped off a package, and left. At the end of the day, like I said, it's 99% sure it's going to be changed. It's just a question of how that changes, so part of what the League's trying to do is mitigate some of those distribution center concerns, i.e., and Senator Hertzberg is actually very amenable to it, to maybe five-to-seven-year roll-in period where a certain percentage stays with the distribution center each year. And even at the end of the roll-in period, that, you know, maybe they hang on to 10% or 20% of the revenue that we, you know, that they're getting today. And just to give an example, these, like Fresno estimates that over a six-year period of time, it will cost them $90 million in sales tax. I think everybody thinks that might be slightly high, but there's certainly some cities in Southern California where that's true. I mean, we're talking potentially hundreds of millions of dollars. We wouldn't see any negative effect on it, because again, we don't have any distribution centers. But it is a big topic, but the feeling is, since the legislature's already looking at it, we should probably try to craft it, you know, better for the local entities than not. That same day in the afternoon, myself and the vice mayor met with the San Juan Unified School District, and the schools, two by two. Nothing major came out of that, except for the fact that, you know, there is a new accredited program, and that's going to start at Mesa next year, and I'm looking for one of you to give me the name of it, because I forgot. It has to do with...
It's a, it's a public safety...
Public safety.
Academy, yeah.
Academy program.
Program, yeah.
Program, yeah. So, looking forward to that, starting up at Mesa, lots of interest from the students there. And then the last thing I'll cover is, the mayor and myself met with the Executive Director of RT, talked about, you know, transit within the city, and, you know, the success, if you will, of our Smart Ride program and the rollout, and then some grant opportunities that we might be looking at from a city standpoint next year. So, thank you.
Good report. Ms. Bruins?
Thank you. I, too, went to the Leadership Citrus Heights graduation, which is, it's really nice to see up-and-coming leaders in our community who take the time out of their months, this is about a 10-month program, to learn and develop their leadership skills and information about the city and the community, with a potential opportunity to serve in a leadership role one day. Also, the Purple Heart Ceremony, I'd like to just name publicly Alan Weiss-Cough, who was the recipient of that Purple Heart. Thank Portia Middleton and Representative Armie Barra's office for putting that together, and just reminds me that we have heroes in our community that we don't necessarily know about. And so, always a wonderful opportunity. This is a man who was a Vietnam vet, who threw a, an error on the part of the, the military and the government, never received his Purple Heart until this last week. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to attend the Fire Academy. We have the, actually, the training facility for all of SAC Metro Fire here in Citrus Heights at our fire station on Greenback, close to Mariposa, and they have a class of graduating students who were able to go through some drills for us. I was there with the city manager, our police chief, and some of our police staff. So we have a new crop of firefighters coming into the community, and that was quite an impressive demonstration. They have to go through a lot to graduate, so. Also, would like to thank those who were able to come out for our Memorial Day services past Memorial Day. It amazes me how our community comes out, and we have standing room only at Sylvan Cemetery, and it's, it's a wonderful feeling to see multi-generations of people come out to honor those who gave their lives so that we could have a free country. And then, I think that is it. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Myself, the day after Memorial Day, I attended the Salvation Army Community Luncheon, where they awarded the Spirit of Caring Award to Michael and Julie Teal of Rayleigh's. It was a very good event, and what I love about it every year is they start on time and they end on time, and it's a very good program. And they also share some success stories with individuals that have overcome homelessness and drug addiction and turned their lives around. So, always a good luncheon to attend. Did attend the Citrus Heights Water District Corp Yard ribbon-cutting that Al mentioned. Wasn't feeling well, but I was able to stop by the Leadership Citrus Heights graduation. That's very near and dear to me. I was in the inaugural class in 2003, and I don't think I'd be sitting here without, if I hadn't attended that leadership class. On June 7th, last Thursday, I covered the SACOG Transportation Committee meeting for Jeff, and the committee is recommending to the board approval of the grant application process for transportation demand management projects, and I know our staff's aware of that and ready to go with some grant applications. We also approved a loan to Placerville to cover construction of the Western Placerville Exchange, monthly progress payments. They're getting started on construction, and the state and federal government don't reimburse till the work is, you know, percentage is completed, and so this, this will help them with their, what do you call it? Help me here. Cash flow. That's what I was looking for. And the SACOG will be reimbursed. And Jeff mentioned, we, I, I meet monthly with the general manager, Henry Lee, and he joined us for our regular briefing about regional transit. And then on Monday, attended the regional transit meeting, and the big item, big-ticket item there was we approved the fiscal year proposed operating budget, and it's now $169 million, and a $528 million capital budget. And if you're looking for details on that, it's, it's on SACRT.com or .net, I can't remember. Anyway, it's on the RT's website. And Al mentioned, it was an extreme pleasure on Tuesday to address the Chamber of Commerce on the State of the City, and if any of the neighborhoods are interested, I can take the show on the road. It's a very comprehensive State of the City, but also I get through fairly quickly, 10, 15 minutes, to talk about our accomplishments and our challenges moving forward. And I think that's it for me. So, Amy, if we move to the next item.
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comment beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Thank you. I currently have speaker card from Arthur Ketterling.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Name is Arthur Ketterling, and I wanted to ask a couple of things. One of them is just a, basically a question, no. Is the S, do you, does this council happen to know at all if the STA is going to put a new tax on, on the initiative that they were, they were considering it earlier this year? And also, I would like to mention that on SB1, I have a question on that, on SB1, what, like the grants that was awarded with our original transit, as we know, that, will that interrupt anything at all? Because that, I wouldn't want to have nothing taken away, and then we don't have no funding for, for, for the, for the program. And I, and I, and as it already shows, that, say for, I'll use Smart Ride, for instance. Smart Ride has been a smart thing itself, and you're finding out that it's doing better than what you thought it was. And I personally mentioned off and on about something like this for a long time, with RT, it's by itself. And I think it's great, and I hope that they can, really can continue on, on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Arthur. You want me to...
And what...
...know about the sales tax?
Because that, there's a thing on the, going to be on in November, far as I know, to try to appeal the SB1.
Repeal.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and I know you had mentioned it once, I believe, Mr. Miller, there at RT itself.
If I can address real quick...
Real quickly, Al.
Number one, SB1 has apparently received enough signatures to go on the ballot for the repeal vote in November. There's obviously mixed emotions all about it. That's where we're getting our money, but folks don't like that gas tax and the increase that was put into it under the circumstances under which it was done, so we'll see how that goes. There is no new sales tax, or new fuel tax information on the ballot that's going to come out of, according to STA, we're not going to have anything on the ballot. And then the other question you had, I believe, was about taking money away from RT, and no, there will be no money taken away. We have got a system where, and very quickly, I talked about the budget, when the money comes out, RT gets a percentage right off the top of the funds, so they go, the road tax and everything else is underneath that, and that comes out as a separate part, budgeted to the local jurisdictions. So RT, other than, unless the whole state system takes a hit, RT will not take a hit on that funding.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, thank you. That, that settles that part, then. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards. If anybody would like to speak, come up quickly and then fill out a card afterwards. I'm not seeing anybody running up to the podium, so that's it for public comment. Let's move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, seven, and eight.
Move the consent calendar.
So motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? The motion carries. Under unanimous.
The next item is a limited public hearing, and the subject is resolutions determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain real property interests for the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Revitalization Project Phase II project. And there are two resolutions for council's consideration determining that the public interest and necessity require the acquisition of certain property and directing the filing of eminent domain proceedings.
Okay, and we're going to get a staff report on that. If there's any public comment, I'll accept that, and then I'll open the limited public hearing. That is just limited to the property owners in question, and if there's any questions from councilmembers or statements, we'll move on from there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Regina Cave, General Services Department. These two items before you this evening, the resolutions of necessity determining the public need to acquire small strips of properties along Auburn Boulevard. These two properties, we've been in negotiations with since last year, since the council had authorized our ability to go ahead and proceed with negotiations. This item before you this evening is simply a tool to initiate the proceedings of eminent domain, but it is important to note that this does not terminate efforts to continue with negotiations with the property owners. This is simply just utilizing this tool to continue forward, to stay on track with our objective of meeting our overall project goals. Any questions?
No. And so we have two properties in question...
We have two separate properties.
What I'll do now is open the limited public hearing to the property owner for 8,000 Auburn Boulevard. Is anybody here to speak that owns the property? Don't see anybody, so I'm going to close the limited public hearing. Move on to 9B, which is 8223 Auburn Boulevard, and again, if the property owner's here and would like to speak. Not seeing anybody, I'm going to close the limited public hearing, and any questions or comments? Mr. Daniels?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, we're not looking to take the entire property of either of these addresses, right?
That is correct. We are not. These are...
And we can give the public an idea of what we're actually looking to take in this regard.
We can. So for property A, this is 8,000 Auburn Boulevard, we do have an item in here, a map that indicates, we don't have it up here, is approximately 1,869 square feet of frontage. This runs across the front of the property, where the existing, behind the back of the sidewalk, where, kind of where the landscape is at. The property right-of-way, actually, excuse me, the property ownership also runs to the middle of the roadway. When some of these properties were acquired for road use, pre-City of Citrus Heights, pre-Sacramento County, by Caltrans, when it was the original highway, those easements were purchased as easements. So this, for this property in particular, they actually own right-of-way or own property to the middle of the road. We are looking to perfect that, meaning we would take ownership of that existing right-of-way and then acquire additional right-of-way at the back of the sidewalk. So for this property, it's approximately 175 lineal feet from the north end of the property to the south boundary of the property. We would acquire approximately six feet in to construct our joint trench and our sidewalks, and also construct ADA ramps at the corner. For 8223, we are acquiring approximately 75 square feet of right-of-way. It's a very narrow, small strip, stretching from approximately three inches at the south end of the property to about 13 inches at the north end on the radius behind the ADA ramp. And then the remaining need is for two joint trench easements on that same property in order to provide electrical connection from the joint trench and the roadway to the back of the property.
And then the property owners are compensated if we do that taking...
Correct. The property owners are compensated. They have already received information on their appraisal over a year ago, as well as the initial offer and negotiation opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Let's take, I'd take a motion on each one individually.
Move to pass the resolution on 8,000 Auburn Boulevard, i.e. A in the agenda, 9A.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, and a third. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Motion carries.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd further move that 8223 Resolution, 9B, be moved as well.
Second.
And with the motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. And that takes us to the next item. Thank you, Regina.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 10, and the subject is designation of voting delegate and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And this year, the League of California Cities Conference will be held September 12th through 14th in Long Beach. There will be an annual business meeting that is scheduled for 12:30 p.m. on Friday, September 14th. And at this meeting, the League of membership will consider resolutions that establish League policy. Therefore, we are asking the council to designate a voting delegate and up to two alternates to vote during that business meeting at the League Conference.
Well, I think, Jeanne, are you the only one attending?
I believe so.
So I don't think there's going to be any alternates, and...
I, I move.
The Jeanne is the voting delegate?
That way he doesn't think he is our delegate.
I second...
I second that.
Oh, there you go. There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
It's a good assignment, just means they have to stay longer, that's all, so...
Sorry about that.
I didn't with you for last year.
Next item, please.
Next item is department reports, number eleven. The subject is review of e-commerce technology for Citrus Heights by the Community and Economic Development and Administrative Services Departments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Rhonda Rivera, Assistant City Manager, and Rhonda Sherman, Community Services Director. And we are here this evening to provide an update on CHAC, otherwise known as Citrus Heights E-Commerce. E-commerce is the ability to conduct city business via the internet. All city departments work very closely together to facilitate efficient processing of city business electronically.
Okay. So council members, um, this was an item that came up at a prior strategic planning retreat, and so we wanted to give you this update. And so currently, um, the city has a few areas where you can do e-commerce, animal licenses, event registration, um, and building permits. Also, you can pay, um, parking fines. So in terms of animal licenses, all animal licenses are done online now through our, um, program called Pet Data. And in two thousand and seventeen, um, over three thousand pet licenses were issued, and through May of this year, we're about thirteen hundred, so we're on track for about the same, hopefully a little bit more. In terms of building permits, um, we have data for about a year now, and so, um, you can obtain a couple different building permits online, electrical, HVAC, which is the heating and air conditioning, plumbing and re-roofs. And so you can see that there is some cyclical, um, differences in terms of, like, the HVAC, but we have seen a steady increase. We have issued over five hundred online permits at this point, and expect to, um, increase that steadily. Um, it's just getting the contractors and the community used to it. Finally, we are, um, implementing business licenses online soon. Um, we issue about nine hundred new licenses each year, um, and we renew over thirty-seven hundred. And so we want to, um, do this implementation for ease and efficiency for both the customer and for the city as well. Um, so our new program's called Citizen Serve. Um, people can, uh, make online payments for new licenses and renewals, and also the processing internally will be done online. And so, um, now we pass around folders to different departments, building, planning, um, police, but now it'll all be done, um, through the computer, so saving paper and time. Um, we are doing our beta test in July, and we hope to, um, have a soft opening at the end of August and go fully live in September. And so those are, um, our e-commerce, um, activities at this point. Do you have questions?
Yeah, I do. On the business licenses, um, if someone should be renewing but they don't, do you have a way of tracking that?
We do. Um, yes, we will contact them. We have a whole database. It'll be converted into the new system, and it'll actually be easier for staff to tell who hasn't renewed on time, and then we do contact them.
Okay, same with pet licensing and anything else that's renewable?
Uh, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, kind of related. Um, I was in the lobby of the police station, uh, a little while back, and there was a lady that came in that tried to license her, uh, dog. And she, uh, from what I understood, uh, she was told that, that she can't do that here, that she has to do that online. She was saying, I don't have internet, I don't have a credit card. Um, and so, um, do we have things in place for people to use old-fashioned paper and checks and cash and stuff like that?
The, the system that we have is online, so we have, they can use the computer at the police department, or they can mail in a check, mail in a money order. The only thing they can't do is process cash.
Okay.
But they can mail it in.
I, I think we should make sure that that's the information that the front desk then has, because I, I don't think that's what I heard it might have been, but, but I don't think that's... She got very, very frustrated and basically kept getting told, sorry, we can't do it any other way, you have to go online, you have to do a credit card.
Oh, that's...
So we should check on that.
We'll, we'll make sure that they have the right information there, and we also have information available, um, at our main desk at City Hall that provides information as well on how to process that. So we'll make sure that that gets distributed everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I actually have a, a surprise slide for you. Um, I just wanted to show you, um, our new banners. We are, um, as part of our, um, awareness campaign, we are going to be reinstituting our banner program, where we will be installing approximately forty banners throughout the city, mainly at the, at the entrances to the city and the major commercial nodes, and this will happen in early, um, July. And so we've incorporated our logo, our tagline, our colors, and we're focusing on, um, the two major areas of the city in, in terms of what we're trying to promote, and that's business and family, and obviously, kind of celebrating those. And so here are, um, images of our banners, uh, that'll be going up in July, and we'll be, um, excited to see the banner program come back, and we, we really excited about the new design.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
I like it. Thank you very much. Next item, Ms. Van?
Next item is city manager items, and there are, are none. The next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything? I'd like to revise my committee and regional board appointments, and I was looking for a second to put this on our next meeting agenda.
Second.
Okay, I'll put together, uh, I, I don't think this will require a staff report, just that I request it be put on the, uh, agenda and, and some resolutions for regional boards. So I'll, I'll discuss that with, with you, Amy. And with that, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.